Hi, welcome to the Village of Buchanan Board Meeting, May 3rd, 2022. At our new time, 7:00 PM, so going forward, our meetings will start at 7:00 instead of 7:30. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So first, we're going to start with the approval of minutes. February 22nd workshop meeting, do I have any comments, corrections? Nothing? Okay. On a motion to approve the February 22nd meeting, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to March 1st, 2022 Board Meeting, any comments on or corrections? No? Okay, can I, I'll make a motion, can I have a second to approve it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to March 22nd workshop meeting. Nothing? Nothing on the March 22nd either? Motion to approve the March 22nd workshop meeting, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
April 5th, 2022 organizational meeting, can I have a motion? If there's no comments or corrections on that? No? Okay, so on a motion to approve the minutes of the April 5th organizational meeting, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last is the April 6th budget hearing, any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, so can, I'm going to make a motion to approve that, the April 6th budget hearing meeting, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Comments from the floor, agenda items only? And something I forgot to do at the beginning of the meeting, in case of an emergency, please use our emergency exit here or use the stairway behind the elevator, do not use the elevator in case of emergency. Thank you. Okay, under new business. Making a motion to open the public hearing on Local Law 5-2022, amending Chapter 181 entitled Taxation to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open to amend. About the amending of this legislation. So basically what this is, we, we are allowed to, by a pilot, to be in negotiations with Holtech. And the problem was, what we have to add is formerly generating facilities. Because before, it was the nuclear-powered electric generating facility, and now it's no longer generating. And so now, what we're adding on to this is so that we'd be able to also have a pilot with a formerly generating facility. That kind of sums up what this is. Any questions on that?
No.
No? Okay. Anybody in the audience, anybody have any questions on this, would like to speak to this? It's pretty straightforward, we're just adding, we're just adding some wording on this. Okay? Good, okay. On a motion to close the public hearing, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now, I am going to read a resolution to adopt Local Law 5-2022, amending Chapter 8 entitled Taxation to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said village board at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law to amend Chapter 181 entitled Taxation to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. And whereas set, notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper. And whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the village board on May 3rd, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan, New York. And all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopt said local law 5-2022, amending Chapter, Chapter 181 entitled Taxation to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. Be it further resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. So I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution. Can I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty straightforward. The next is, we had at our workshop meeting, we had AMS acquisitions do a presentation on a potential development to the left of and behind the hardware store on 9A. So Marcus, I would like you to please ask them to come to our next workshop. I felt their presentation was interesting. But I would like them to come back to tell us what zoning changes they feel are necessary for this project before they waste any money. And the board should know exactly what they're looking to do. And we had spent some time on the board doing an overlay district of the whole 9A corridor and also another area. So I would like to see, like, a comparison of what we did, what are, you know, we did with the overlay district, and what their proposals are for the zoning changes. And also if they could give us an idea of what, bless you, what the possible setback would be from 9A. That's something I'm kind of interested in. Would anyone else like to comment on?
Um, I would.
Okay.
I'm excited to, to hear what they have, their next presentation too, I think it's a, it's promising. And I'd like to get educated on what they decide to do and how they're going to do it. Moving forward, I think it's, it's, could be something that I'm interested in.
Yeah, we just need some more information.
Yeah.
I mean, they had just given us a, kind of an overview, and I just think, you know, for the board. And anyone that's interested that would like to come to that meeting if they have any questions, they're more than welcome to come too.
I would agree, I would like to see this go to the next, next level, see what we, see what's in front of us. Excited about it.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion, the next is Item D, to call for a public hearing on Local Law 6-2022, amending Chapter 155 entitled Sewers to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. With us this evening, we have George Palmer. And George, we are going, I'm just scheduling the public hearing this evening, I don't know if you would be available for the next meeting to come in and go over if the board has any questions. I have looked through it, it's, it's a definite upgrade to the code that we have, so.
Yes, I would be available to go over at the next meeting. There was this suggestion made at the last meeting, which we incorporated into, into the code, which was about reporting and sending information back to the village. We didn't actually just make change to one section, we actually changed about three or four sections. So you'll see those highlighted in green or gray, it says the May 3rd, 2022 provision, so.
So, we will discuss that further, if no one has any questions for George right this second. So I'm making a motion to schedule the public hearing on Local Law 6-2022, amending Chapter 155, once again entitled Sewers to the Code of the Village of Buchanan, can I have a, hold on? We're scheduling it for June?
Seven.
June 7th, okay? And the public hearing will be scheduled for June 7th. That's important. Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number E, this is to extend the current pilot agreement for one year at the same annual payment as stated in the MOU as the memorandum of understanding and subparagraphs. So let me just do a very brief review. When the Village of Buchanan became an intervenor with the sale of Entergy to Holtech, we had done an agreement with them, and the agreement was for $1.2 million. So we have an option of extending that for one more year. And we would have to also, I believe by the end of this month, there has to be a written confirmation that we would like to agree on extending the agreement for one more year. We are working on a new agreement with them, we are just, we're working through it, so we're not quite there yet. So, but this would give us time to work on that. Otherwise, we don't have an agreement at all. So, and Marcus, I know that says that has to be in writing, I don't know if you or Cindy would send the notice, notification to them?
I have no idea who to send it to, I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Okay, perfect, thank you, I appreciate it. So, um... So it's, it's basically the same agreement, same annual payment of the $1.2 million until we come to a new agreement. So on a motion to extend the current pilot agreement for one year for the $1.2 million as stated in the memorandum of understanding, say that 10 times fast, as indicated in subparagraph 14 in the MOU. Can I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
Okay. Oh yes, thank you, Sean. Okay, um, let's go to, sorry. We have a lot of paper here this evening, it's a, a lot of things going on. Okay, so the Village of Buchanan, the Town of Portland, we get into intermunicipal agreements with the town, and this is a resolution regarding the shared use of equipment and bidding by the town purchasing director. So I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the Village of Buchanan and the Town of Portland have been cooperating with respect to certain intermunicipal services, and whereas the village and the town annually enter into two intermunicipal agreements, one which allows for the village to utilize any bids for supplies put out and accepted by the town, as well as an agreement that allows the village and the town to share each other's vehicles and equipment. And whereas it is the desire of the both village board and town board to continue this intermunicipal cooperation resulting in cost savings to both the village and the town. Now, now be it therefore resolved that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute intermunicipal agreements with the Town of Portland, providing for and authorizing the town's purchasing director to include the village in advertisement of all bids by him so that the village may utilize them, and to allow the village and the town to share each other's vehicles and equipment. On a motion to accept this resolution authorizing the intermunicipal agreement? Can I have a second?
Second.
On a question?
Yeah, on a question, uh, does this mean we're going to be having the Town of Portland bid our paving again for us?
I think it's up to us if we want to do that, I mean...
So this allows us to do that?
This was for, this was, I don't think this was for road work.
It could be anything.
Could be for anything, okay, so it's under an umbrella, okay.
So...
I'm sorry, and George does look at the numbers between the town and our bid and timing, so...
Say again?
When we, when George, and I'll speak for behalf of George, but I know last, the last time we bided out, we did talk to the town about their timing and our timing, our timing didn't jive, and the amounts were not that far off, George, if I remember correctly, we did talk to the town about that, last time.
Yeah, we did look at it, uh, see if...
Get the mic.
I'm sorry. Yeah. We did look at it to see if there was a cost savings, if we use the, because the town has a piggyback clause, and we looked at their numbers compared to the numbers we got, and it was more beneficial last year to use our own numbers. So, but there was in there to at least look at it, which is important.
So this is cheaper and the time worked, we definitely can use it.
Yes.
Okay, and, and I'm just going to take a second while we're talking about roads. We still have to finish last year's, we, we ran out of time with the weather, so that should be happening pretty soon. And then we'll be looking at the roads that have to be done this year, for this year's project.
That's correct.
I just wanted to, while we're talking about roads, combine it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Cindy, you're going to be up next. So consider a motion for the treasurer to make all required budget transfers, adjustments, and amendments to close the 2021-2022 fiscal year as required by the annual audit. So our annual year ends this month, May 31st. So Cindy, just, she handed us...
No.
Nope, that's not it, I'm sorry, I thought you, you had given us the...
Yeah, it's coming up next.
Oh, that's next?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is just regular budget transfers.
Okay, that we do every year?
Yes.
Before the end of the year?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, so I'm making a motion to, for the treasurer to make all required budget transfers, adjustments, amendments to close the 2021-2022 year. Can I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I get to this. Okay. This is something we do each year also, so I'm going to be in a minute asking for a motion for the unpaid water charges to be added to residents' tax bills. So this isn't, this tax bill goes back to, it's not, it's not current, it's not like last October. How far do these?
Actually, we did not re-levy last year because we couldn't, so these go way back now.
Oh, okay.
If you look at the amount, it's big.
Okay, all right. So, these are, the, the board has received all the residents, all the, that have not, that are behind on their water bill. So now these will be levied onto their village tax bill?
Correct.
That they would need to pay this June, by June 30th?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And this is something we do every year, like I said. So I'd like to make a motion for the unpaid water charges to be added to the Village of Buchanan tax bill. Can I have a second? On a question? Second? Did I get a second?
Second.
These guys are shy tonight, huh? Thanks, dear.
I, I asked about this last month, and you said that we weren't allowed to do that? Something changed in the last 30, uh, two weeks, actually?
I actually got a copy of the, the extended law from the state, I actually talked to NICOM, so the law is still available for people, that you cannot shut off their water, and you cannot foreclose on the property. You can re-levy, as long as you're not shutting off their services or foreclosing on the house, you can re, you can add it to the, you can actually transfer the amount onto the water bill, I mean, the water bill to the taxes.
Got you.
So I'm glad, you didn't remind me of that, so I actually made a phone call after the meeting.
Alrighty, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next two is for the court. We are authorizing, there was some additional work that needed to be done. And we are going to make a motion to pay Mary Mailer at the rate of $20 an hour for 50 hours. We had, because of COVID and different things, we got a little bit behind. So we needed a little extra help, and I think we're pretty much caught up, or pretty close to being caught up. So, on a motion to pay Mary Mailer at the rate of $20 an hour for 50 hours, can I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and also with the court, we hired Deborah Farrell as a specialized consultant to assist in the court also, at a rate of $20 an hour for 30 hours. So I'd like to make a motion to pay Deborah Farrell as a specialized consultant at the rate of $20 an hour for 30 hours. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, we, this time of the year, we do seasonal help, so we're going to, I'm going to ask for, I'm asking for a motion authorizing employment of seasonal help at the rate of $15 an hour, and I'm going to ask a question first. Do we have anybody on the list at this time?
Excuse me, yes, we have three people available to help with the highway and one at the sewer plant.
Oh wow, good, that's great. And they can start pretty soon, or?
One can start tomorrow, and the others I will call and find out when they can start. A couple will have to finish school.
Okay, well, that's okay, school's important.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So we're only going to hire four?
I think, isn't that what we usually do, wheels, there's two or three for the highway and there's one for the sewer plant?
Uh, for the highway, we usually have a list to it.
Okay.
You know, you're going to ask, because this is an open-ended resolution, we have to put a cap on it. We can't say we're going to hire 10, 15, you know, was it three, four, five, you know?
Okay, how many, if we could get others, do you feel three is enough, do you?
Well, I think it might be a good idea to do it, in case someone, I know one of them is meeting in July, so it leaves me a month short there, I'll have to help myself with some of that.
Okay, so we have them for a couple of months.
And we're actually limited to the budget amount for the part-time help as well, so we won't be able to hire, like, more than three or four people anyway.
How much is the budget for?
I have to look it up, but it's always the same budget we have every year for part-time help, and we sometimes, and sometimes we, well, seem to be under, but we can't fill the positions all the time, and then kids leave early. So we've never actually went over budget in the amounts that we have, with the little part-time kids we have. We could have actually filled those positions for the entire, for the entire term we're looking for. That's the prime way to happen. So if anybody wants, has kids, they want to get a job, we're open for business.
Was that on a question, Sean?
Yeah, that was, I thought, I thought you...
Sure, we're...
I'm sorry.
I, I left off, that's all. Okay, um, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded that one?
Anthony.
Okay, good, thank you, Anthony. Um, the next is, I'll be making motion authorizing the engineer to prepare specifications and advertise for bids for sludge removal. So over at the sewer treatment plant, the end of the process would be, one would be sludge, the other would be the water that's treated that can be used for fish tanks. And it would go out to Dicky Brook, and it's clean, it's processed, and would go into the Hudson River. So each year, we need to remove the sludge that's in the tank over there, correct, George?
Correct.
So this is something we do every year.
We did it last year, one year, where they extended for a second year, so this is, and it's a second year.
Okay.
So we just, after two years, we're going to rebid again, and maybe have the same option again.
Okay, all right, okay. So, motion to authorize the engineer to prepare specs and advertise the bids for sludge removal, can I have a second?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next motion I am, I'm going to recuse myself from. There is a relative that would like to use the pavilion, so I'm going to turn over the resolution to Deputy Mayor Kathakati to, to take care of that, and I'll be abstaining on that, thank you.
Okay, uh, I would like to make a motion authorizing the use of the pavilion and serving of alcoholic beverages on June 4th for George Malice. I see the required insurance is included. And can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next motion is N. I am also adding on to our Recreation Advisory Committee, Colleen Lonergan. So I'd like to motion, a motion to appoint Colleen Lonergan to the Recreation Advisory Committee, can I have a second, please?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
And George, I'm so glad you're here tonight. So, the next motion is about the posting of the MS4 Annual Stormwater Report, so if you could just give us a review of what, what the stormwater report is.
Sure. George, put the mic to you. Thank you.
So every year, the village and all the other villages in Westchester County and the state have to report annually back to the DEC, this is DEC requirement. We go through, this is a 37-page report, it asks several questions, we have to monitor outfalls, we have to go to all the outfalls that discharge to Dicky Brook, that discharge to Lake Mihaw, make sure they're in good condition. And then if there's an issue, we have to report back to the DPW and the village administrator as to their condition and what needs to be done. And there's outreach program in here as well, to let, where we put this document in the library and at village hall, so anybody who wants to read it can go through it and see what's in there, see what we're reporting on. It also gets into our SWEPS, the construction projects that have stormwater pollution prevention plans, and if they're compliant or non-compliant, and what the status is. And that's pretty much it, and it's, as a requirement by the DEC, at the end of the year, so the term is ending in March 9th, it has to be posted to the DEC, it has to be posted to the village website, and it has to be sent to the DEC by June. I forget the exact date in June, but it has to be submitted next month to make sure that we're up and compliant, village is compliant. So that's pretty much what we do.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So, um, all right. A motion that we're in receipt and posting of the MS4 Annual Stormwater Report, can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, can I have a second? Do you have a second? On a question?
Yeah, George.
Any questions for George?
George, how many active SWEPS do we have right now?
Uh, we only have one, and that's for gas. Algonquin has, doing work down at the old quarry, that, um, they are redoing one of their gas, uh, I forget what the name of it is exactly, but one of their service stations that they pump gas to and from. So they have several pumping stations.
At, at the quarry?
There's, well, right over the line is, it's in the Buchanan, it's like in the forage area there, so it's in, it's in Buchanan. It's in our jurisdiction, so that's the only one that's open right now.
So they're the ones who are hooked up to the fire hydrant, up there, they're using the water for the last couple of weeks?
Oh no, those people can, though, that's, um, that's Holtech, they're knocking, across the street on, um, if you recall what the last gate is, they have some storage tanks, they're knocking down those storage tanks on the...
Wrong side of the street.
Uh, what, the hydrant is on, if you're driving, Holtech is on your left-hand side and your right-hand side, there's a hydrant, and there's a hose going in that side, they have some, some structures there, they're knocking those down, and so they're connected to the hydrant, so they hose down the...
So how are we metering the water?
Bob?
We have a meter on it.
Yep.
Oh yeah?
They sold the meter and we're monitoring it all day.
Every time I've gone by it, it's just a gated wire and a hose, there's no meter.
We put it down in the property.
Oh yeah? All right, cool.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is, can I have the right thing here? Okay, yep, discussion on Linsco Ball Field fence.
Bob, will you come up?
Yeah, come up to the microphone.
The fence, ball field fence, Bob. I think Bob had a good idea, so I'm going to share with you.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Is this on?
Yep.
It's on, okay. I just wanted to ask the board if it's okay if we take that fence down, that run of ball field, the ball field's obviously not being used anymore the way it is right now, it's just like an abandoned piece of property, I think if we take it down, it'll be more open, you know, get some grass around areas to maintain, it won't look like it's an abandoned ball field.
So you're talking about the fence next to the parking lot, like that whole strip there?
I think the higher fence, which would be the outfield fence for the ball field, we would just leave that, because that will keep caution driving on the field for the parking lot. I'm talking about the rest of that field, first, and first baseline, and behind where the backstop used to be. It really is just like a, an abandoned piece of property, it just doesn't look very attractive.
Yeah.
I would happen to agree with that.
So we can take it down and maintain it, it's another, you know, there's things in the future we may want to do there. Nice piece of grass.
Yeah. Sure is, it would open up the field. Okay, is everybody in agreement with that? Are we good?
I don't foresee any, any future use for ball fields, I know Town of Portland's not going to be able to afford what they need right now.
There is someone that approached me in the village about a girl's softball, possibly using it for that, but then I mentioned to them about, you know, we don't own the whole field.
Yeah, there is no field there to be used anymore, it's been totally, you know, abandoned, basically.
And those fences would need to be taken down if anybody's to use it anywhere, so.
So there's, there's no way to restore the field then?
Well, there is, if you want to spend the money on it. For, you know, it could just cost, what, $35,000 to do the ball field behind the building?
Yeah.
And that is somewhat of a ball field, this, this field's been, you know, even when they were using it, it's needed a lot of work over all the years. We've, we've dumped in thousands of dollars trying to keep that up. To redo it, you'd have to, it has to be, it's a, it's a discussion, you... I guess the board would have to have it amongst themselves if they want to put that kind of investment in for a possible future use, which personally, I don't see one. I mean, you, you, you're a softball player.
Well, I just see that's for.
There anymore.
For, no, and when, even when I played on that field, it was dangerous, so.
Yeah.
You know, I just, for the young kids coming up, it's the only lighted field in this area, you know? And besides going out to Sprout Brook.
Right, and that, and the lights themselves are probably, they're in need of significant work. We've been lucky.
They're not high enough, actually. You're not.
Talk with electricians all these, we've got problems there. There, any parts that go in the valves up top, we're, we're not replacing them. You're rediting that field, which is a lot of money.
Big number.
You know, it's, it's a shame, but no one uses it.
No, it is a shame. It's an absolute shame that that field is not utilized through the way it used to be.
Yeah.
And if it was maintained, you know, a lo- long time ago, you know, not, not to put anything on you, I'm just saying is that it is a lighted field in our area for our little leaguers that we should have used and we should have maintained. Cause it's a shame that where it is right now. It's just a waste of, waste of space.
Little leagues never used it.
No, I think we should have.
The Taran Corlton left, hasn't needed it.
No, I.
Leagues have gotten smaller, they've gotten a few more ball fields on their own, and they don't have to pay us to use it.
And I'm still playing, unfortunately.
Good for you. Eat this up.
Yeah, so, I get it. I just feel like, you know, with, with our travel teams and stuff like that, the field like that, a lighted field in this area for our, our youngsters would be good. And it would be nice if we could offer to them, but I'm, I can't see us doing anything with dumping that kind of money into it.
Well, I think as trustee Laker said, I mean, no matter what, it's still, even if we want to redo that, the fence is shot.
The fence is done.
You have to start just with the fence. It's, the fence is as old as that field is, as that field built, or it's the seventies.
Seventies.
So we patched a couple of them up, or, you know, we, we put it together best we can to keep it going. So it's out, it's, it's out in its life, you know, so it's always there for future use.
Yeah.
It would just require rebuilding the field, you know, which, you know.
Well, that, that requires, requires a lot of money.
A lot of taking.
Yeah, a lot of money.
So.
Plus, we still have to pave the parking lot as well.
Yep.
Yeah.
There are a lot of issues besides paving.
Yeah, everything's sinking down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just, um, it's a shame. It's a shame that it got to this point, that's all.
Well, um.
You got a lot of memories down here like I do.
Yes, we do. The parking lot was never like that, but that was a dump, so.
I know, I know.
And that was one of the things I had asked George to give, um, a price on for the Entergy Community Fund. So not only did we put in for the sewer money, but I think what was eight, nine hundred thousand dollars for us to, we were hoping to get money from that to be able to, uh, take care of the Lenzco parking lot too, but we weren't approved for that.
Understandable. I, I, it's, it's not a necessity and, but, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a real unique piece of property in our village that should, we should look into taking a little better care of. You know, like, like we said with the docks and everything else, but that, that, that field is just a shame that it's not being used, that's all.
And I know the town, wasn't there something, the town, that they, their, their leagues had gotten so small that they didn't need our, our lot?
One of the biggest uses was the A league.
Yeah.
Right.
There were like, what, ten, twelve A leagues back in the day, then it got down to like six, and a couple of them weren't even that good, they shouldn't have been there themselves.
Hey, hey, hey!
You and me, we were good.
Wait a minute.
You know, it became to the point where now they have their ball fields here. I think they, are you playing wooden bat?
Wooden bat, yeah.
No more, no more metal bats for a reason.
No, I'm the old guy now. I was the young guy at one time, now I'm the old guy. I'm playing with my son.
I had some of those wooden bats coming to play.
Yeah.
Right there, remember?
Yeah.
Anyway, anything else? So if the village, the boards of mind, I'd like to, you know, make it look nicer by starting there.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay?
And I know, even if we wanted to use it in the future once again, like I said, the whole tech, we would have to, they would have to allow us to do it, so. Alright, good. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Nick, did you want to say something? I see your hand. Yeah, go ahead, that's fine. That's, usually I, I'll wait to the end, but this has in reference to that.
You know, and I'm not even on the board anymore. Thank you.
But as we're talking about Lenzco.
I just want to make a suggestion. The fence that runs along the Entergy property, I think you should leave it there. That area is heavily infested with ticks, and if people are gonna start using that for frisbee, having a catch, soccer, they're gonna be chasing stuff in there. The fence that runs from the backstop out along the left field line, I think you want to leave that so that if kids are playing, uh, they're not chasing stuff into those thickets. Uh, I go, I've hiked in there and I've come out covered in hicks, uh, ticks. Hicks too sometimes, but mostly ticks. Uh, so, just a thought, just to protect people from going in there to chase stuff.
So you're talking about taking the fence closer to the road?
Left field line. It's a low fence. It's not a high fence.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think that might offer some protection for people that play there.
That chops off on that side anyway.
It's in good shape.
There's no grass on that side anyway, really, is there? It's all weeds anyway.
It's a little weedy.
It was a berm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it dropped down, yep.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Uh, information from officers and departments, uh, we have, uh, the justice court reports for, uh, April 5th, uh, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. April 5th, also twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars, so you can see we're back, we're back on track and, um, we're getting caught up. Uh, and then also on, uh, March 1st, uh, seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. Whoop, and then there's another one, I'm sorry. And also, uh, March 1st, uh, three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars. The police report, um, going forward, Steve, since you're the liaison, I'll have you, um, I'll have you go over the police reports. I'm just gonna do real quick, um, the breakdown. Uh, there were fifty-two moving summonses for February. Total calls, a hundred and sixteen. Parking summons is thirty-one. Speeding nineteen. One-stop sign. Four disobeyed traffic control and other violations, twelve and, twelve equipment. Uh, for March, moving summonses fifty-nine. Total calls, a hundred and fifty-four. Nineteen parking summonses. Speeding twenty-five. People were speeding more in March. Uh, disobeyed traffic control, three. Five unlicensed, unregistered.
Yeah.
Uninspected motor vehicles, nine. And equipment and other violations, seventeen. So I, I always like to just give a quick review of some of the things there. Then we have the February highway report. Household trash, sixty-two point fifty-two tons. Bulk and dumpsters, seven point twenty-three, uh, tons. Dumpster's alone, nine point five tons. Metal pickup, point ninety-eight tons. E-waste, five TVs. And Bob, we still have that, the, uh, Westchester County, um, drop-off in the back of the highway department by the salt shed. So they, they've been pretty busy, all kinds of things going on. Thanks for, uh, always doing this, Bob. Uh, the March report, household trash, seventy-two tons. Bulk and dumpsters, twenty, twenty tons. Dumpster's only thirteen tons. Bagged leaves, five point seven tons. Okay, highway wastewater treatment, four. Yeah, it's, it's kind of interesting, cause you never really know how much gets processed over there. Treated wastewater, eight point four hundred and fifty-seven gallons. Sludge removal, eighty-three thousand gallons. And then when we come to March, we had treated wastewater of eleven thousand four hundred and two gallons. Sludge removal, seventy-eight thousand gallons. Okay. And the building department reports for February and for March. Planning board, uh, February seventeenth, March seventeenth. Buchanan Engine Company for February and March. Hold on a second here. So, in February, for the Buchanan Engine, six EMS assist, other emergency, one. Three mutual aid. And for March, one structure fire, eight EMS assist, three other emergency, and two mutual aid given. Uh, we also included in our packet was the prosecutor's report for March of 2022. Attorney's report. Stephanie, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do, but we're in the executive session.
Okay, thank you. Marcus, our administrator, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, I've had a couple of things, but since George is here, I'm gonna let George update you on a couple of projects. The Route 9 project, the pavilion, so I'll let him update the board on everything that's going on.
So the Route 9 project, the sidewalk project is, we're two or three weeks into the project and we're close to being completed. We have the little section by Rolindo to do and the section near the culvert. We're waiting for some drainage structures to come in to get DOT approval. So, right now, you'll see that, uh, the contractor won't be there for a while, um, till those structures come in. And, uh, that's as far as the Route 9 project. And that's a grant project, so it's all reimbursable. Then we have the, uh, the pavilion. The contractor is working on the pavilion. He's completed, let's say, eighty percent of the steel repairs. Uh, so that's near complete as well. Uh, the lights for the pavilion, that should be coming in either next week or the week after. They're waiting for a shipment to come in of the lights, from what I understand. And then, what else did we have? I think that was it.
Kayak.
Oh, the kayak. So we submitted to the, to the DEC, uh, New York State Office of General Services. Office of General Services, uh, didn't have any comment, but the, uh, the New York State DEC and the US Army Corps of Engineers, uh, came back with some comments, and they're both very interested in the, um, the practicality of the project. So they're interested, because when the kayak, uh, launches out, or dock is out there, it can only be used during high tide. And as the tide goes down, it'll end up sitting on top of the existing boat ramp. So the DEC and, uh, the US Army Corps wants some more information, saying, do you really, you know, want to do this and move forward with it if it's only gonna be usable during the times of high tide? So they're looking for a little bit more feedback on that. And the other issue you, you asked at the previous meeting was the cost. So the cost was approximately fourteen thousand dollars for the kayak dock itself. That's the material cost, and then to put it in, um, we're estimating, it, it was contemplated at one point that Bob Wheeler was gonna install it, but I'm not sure if he's gonna be around to do that. Or, uh, so there was the thought that Highway could possibly do something for it, if you bid it out to a contractor. They would, uh, install it, so that could be another ten thousand, cause it could be a twenty-five thousand dollar project, when all's said and done. Or more, so it all depends when you put it out, uh, uh, what the, what the bids come back. So that's, I think that's.
Tate Avenue, the old kind, there's some work to go, you've been doing some curbs, just kind of along, you know, it's boring, man, too.
So, yeah, the ongoing gas work out in front of, uh, Village Hall. So we asked Con Ed, um, before they restore it, to let the trenches sit and settle as much as possible cause we didn't want any more future issues. So they're gonna be restoring that in the next few weeks, as soon as I get an update, uh, from Con Ed.
Throw it down on Tate Avenue. Remember the old trench that actually stopped sinking? They said they're gonna move forward, so.
Yes, they said they were gonna move forward with that as well. They're gonna come back and, and pave to half the road for the trench that's in front of Valerie. And again, we're gonna, when we get a timeline, we'll send it off to the village when they, when they, when they, uh, schedule to do that. So everything's waiting for, the asphalt plants are open now, but now it's a matter of scheduling the work, so. Couldn't do any of that work during the winter. You don't want to do it during the winter, cause that's just not the time to do it, to get quality work, so.
George, I wanted to ask you, um, over at Lenz Cove, the cement, uh, the dock there, it's, it's broken up. Uh, have, is there any way, cause it's, it's kind of dangerous, it's, is there any way we can do something temporarily to?
I, I could meet with Bob over there, we could come up with a, a game plan to temporarily, uh, fill in some, there's a cavity in one spot, there's a.
Showing the rebar and all that stuff.
So maybe cut a section out and fill that section in. Um, that falls under maintenance. That's not, you know, part of the kayak. The DEC allows you to do maintenance, but normal maintenance, so.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I went over and looked at that. So where the boat ramp is, the, the, the real hazard is to the right of it. When I believe that's where the boat ramp connects to. Because that's the thing that's kind of sticking up out of the water with a lot of metal exposed.
Yeah, there was, there was a dock.
To me, it could probably be an easy fix. I don't know, Bob, I don't know if you looked at it from a Highway perspective, you know?
Yes, that was the old, that was the boat ramp, where it connected the boat ramp too.
Yep.
So it's been there, and with a dissection, possibly bring another boat ramp there, but it has been getting worse and worse over the past couple of years. So in anticipation of bringing up the kayak ramp, that, that would be part of where we'd be going. I probably understand that would be removed and that project would move along.
Right.
We can always just cut the, uh, the pipe out that's sticking up. Getting that concrete out is gonna be a project with the big machine.
Yeah, and that's not included in that ten thousand dollar price, I can tell you that right now.
Oh, no.
But I, I'm not, I'm not into construction, but is there some way to temporarily, like, patch that? Because it's, you know what I mean? It's, it's a hole.
Yeah, you have to dowel it and then form it and then pour it.
Is it, on low tide, is it in water or?
It's out of water.
It's out of water, yeah. You could dowel and pour it.
It depends on the tide, yeah.
You have to deal with that with the tide.
Yeah.
Yeah, the restoration of that concrete is definitely not near a ten thousand dollar price here. So we, that would be, uh, an issue as well moving forward, because, I mean, uh, fourteen thousand for the dock itself and ten thousand dollars for installation, that's not even the, uh, the fixing of the, uh, existing.
No, that, no, that doesn't get into the fixing of the existing. That, that's not part of that, that number.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a scope that would have to be fleshed out. So, like was mentioned a minute ago, we have an existing dock there with an existing, um, foundation. That should be just taken out if we're never gonna use it.
It should, because it's a hazard.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
People could accidentally walk on it, it's just not something that you want to keep.
And at high tide, I still occasionally, I, I don't know what they're doing, but I see people putting their boat in, you know, and I'm, I'm not close enough to say you're not coming back when the tide drops. But, you know, I, yep, they have to wait for the tide to go back up, I guess, to come back in, even though we're not using that anymore. Um, I wanted to talk to you about, um, on Albany Post Road. I'm noticing by the culvert, uh, the, the sidewalk goes like behind the pole there. Mm-hmm. And there's a large area there that's open. Are they planning on, you know, cause it's not a good place to plant with the salt in the fall, you know, in the winter, you know, everything will die. Are they planning on putting anything in there other than like dirt or gravel or?
Uh, DOT shares your concern.
Okay, good.
It's a wasteland, that's what that is.
And you know what I think would be good? I think pavers would look lovely there.
So, um, right now, um, uh, there's, uh, planned to put asphalt in that section, cause that was a modification, because that pole is gonna be coming out.
Oh, it's still gonna come out, oh.
And a new pole's gonna be moved further down, because it's a certain distance behind the guide rail, so it needs to go. So, but apparently it's got two aerial cables on top of it, so to move two aerial cables is a year to move aerial cables from Con Ed. So the pole's gonna, the new pole's gonna be there. They're gonna, um, transfer over the aerial cables and then pull that pole out. And then, right now, alls we have is for asphalt to be in there, a two-inch layer of asphalt. Uh, but if we can get prices to do, um, decorative brick gravors, that's similar to across the street, um, we can do that. I can ask the contractor.
Could ask, you know, doesn't cost anything to ask.
So, but that would be, uh, upgrade, um, a change order to the project, so.
Okay.
I think you should bring asphalt to grade there, if you're future moving the pole, and then after that, pour concrete. Match grade with concrete. That'd be your finished product.
Oh, concrete would be even better.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, and you can do stamped concrete too, if you, if you like stamped concrete. But the guide rail, just so you know, the guide rail's going in that location too, because the culvert's there. So the, um, DOT said, you can't eliminate the guide rail, you gotta keep the guide rail there. So that's, that's the problem too. The weeds grow around the guide rail posts and it's, it's a, it's a maintenance nightmare is what it really is. So, uh, need some type of, everybody wants some type of hard surface, and we can get you different prices for different, different hard surfaces to go in there.
Well, if they're gonna be removing the pole, probably just go with asphalt then, right?
For now.
Yeah, for now.
For now.
For now. And you can always do the, the, the concrete later on, yeah, so.
Concrete would work too.
Well, the stamped concrete is, is, comes out really nice. I mean, stamped concrete is, is a, is a good option.
Yes, it can work.
Alright, that sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, uh, let's see, moving on. Um, all right, let's see. Moving on to trustee report, we're gonna go this way. Sean, what do you have for us tonight?
Thanks. Uh, Marcus, a couple of people have reached out to me and complained about the Journal News Express, that newspaper that is like an advertisement that gets thrown out onto the street in front of their houses. They were complaining in the wintertime, they were complaining in the springtime, get stuck in the snow blowers. Uh, these people haven't subscribed to them. It's almost like an advertisement. So, I was wondering if there's a way we can contact Con Ed to say, you know, stop throwing newspapers on the ground over it. Also, I just wanted to remind everybody, the Memorial Day Parade is gonna be in Montrose this year at eleven AM. The lineup is going to be, um, Montrose Point Road, and it's gonna go to the high school. That's gonna be on Monday, May thirtieth at eleven AM. Todd Cortland's Memorial Day Ceremony is going to be at the Morbeto Center on Westbrook Drive. That's gonna be on the twenty-seventh at one thirty, but it's a Friday. Uh, I see that on our website, we've had the applications that we've been looking for, for the two positions, actually, three positions. And I was wondering why the administrator's position is up there. Looking for a new job or? And that is one of the only positions that we have a pay scale associated with. The last couple of times when we had looked for an administrator, we didn't have a pay scale associated with it.
Yeah, the administrator's job is out there, because I got granted the waiver, so the state requires that we keep that out there in case the board has somebody else that will take the job, and then you can always interview somebody else.
So, how many applications have we had for administrator?
None.
Do you think it could be because the pay scale is only listed as seventy thousand dollars? Or how about remove it? Because of the other two jobs, well, then the other two jobs should have a pay scale then too, because the other two jobs don't have a pay scale. They do? I didn't say it.
No, no, we can add it up.
So, we should, if we're gonna give everybody's pay scale, we should, you know, everybody should be treated the same. Yeah, I did hear that. Did you hear that?
Well, the pay scale, then, whatever Marcus is getting paid now, maybe that would be to put.
If you guys want to put salary ranges, we put salary ranges. If you don't want to put salary ranges, we won't put salary ranges. I, like I said before, whenever we had interviewed people, we didn't have an official salary range. We had taken what their salary requests were, and we tried to negotiate with them. Also, uh, if you guys could just give me some feedback on the accessory apartment revision that I had suggested last month, or last week, I should say, if you guys could just send me, or email me some comments, so that we can amend that legislation, or just have it move forward.
Okay, I'd like to put that on the workshop, because I'd like to also bring in the building inspector. He had a comment to make too, so. And so Cindy, if you could put that on the workshop. Oh, please, thank you. Okay.
And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Trustee Steve Laker, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, I've been, spent the last month just getting up to speed with everything in the village, and there's a lot going on. So, I appreciate, you know, Marcus setting up all the meetings that we have with the planner, and the, you know, financial advisor, and everybody, you know, just trying to get up to speed, so. It was really good. You know, I attended both the Buchanan and Montrose Fire Department's remembrance days, and those are great events. The Montrose one was actually in honor of trustee Stewart's father, so that was a great event, and he was very instrumental here in the village, as well as Cortland Engine Company. So, it was a great event, and that's about it.
Thank you. Trustee Dan Stewart, what do you got for us?
Trustee Laker stole all my thunder.
Oh, no. I hate when that happens.
Thank you to Marcus for kind of giving us the orientation and guidance through the process. I'm looking forward to serving. And one other thing to add with the Buchanan Memorial Service for the Fire Department, they, a real nice thing was they dedicated the, the new engine to, past members Chapiak and Cody, both past chiefs, so it was, it was a nice service, so. That's all I had.
Both were very nicely done, both memorials, Buchanan and Montrose. Deputy Mayor Capicati, what do you have for us tonight?
Well, I'm sorry I didn't make the memorials, but I'm, I'm glad that you guys attended, and, um, congratulations, Dan, on the, you know, with your father being honored there. That's a great thing. He did a lot for the village, and I know he was a big part of the firehouse. Um, at the last meeting, we had a developer come in, and the developer had a presentation that is unique in a way. And I feel that, you know, to the developers out there, I just wanted to say that we, we as the village should be open for business. And moving forward into the, into the future, I would like to, you know, hear more from developers like this. And I think that, you know, I'd like to hear some feedback from the community on what they think of development like this. Because it's important for us to make these decisions, and the right decisions with feedback. And so, the next meetings, we have them coming back in, and if the public would, would come in and give us some feedback, it would be great. Because these are big decisions, and we have not many parcels available, and we have to make the right decisions. Because we have, we got a lot of ground to make up since Entergy's closed, so. That's about all I have to say.
All right, thank you. George, I'm glad you're here tonight again. I know we're moving along with the pavilion, with the upgrades on that. If you could, um, look at what other things that need to be done over there, so if there's any grant money available, we'll see if we can use it towards other things. I know it needs, the inside structure looks like to be painted. So, because I did speak to the contractor, he's doing a really nice job over there, really. It looks good.
Now, you, you look at the areas where the steel has been done, he's painted it and whatnot, and it looks nice and sharp, and then you start looking up, and you say, oh, this is getting, you know, it's reached its age, and it could be used a new coat of paint. So, I know we did it in two thousand and six.
Oh, wow.
Uh, back then, it was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and we painted the pavilion and the highway garage at the time. And combine that, try to get a cost savings, you know, bulk work for the two projects. The highway garage is, is the same thing. You could use, you know, paint as well. So, we can always put those two numbers together for a budget next year. I know there was recreation money at one time that Entergy was giving for that, but I don't know if it could go to maintenance or whatever. I don't remember now, so.
And as we did last year, we, that'll be a capital project. I got a list of capital projects for the department heads. At the future workshop, we'll give you a list of what, what the requests are, and we have another meeting where the department heads, who can review all the requests and, and set priorities. And then we can figure out how to, how to fund any of those projects you want to move forward. So, with a future workshop, I'll get you this, get you a spreadsheet with everything, including George's number for the pavilion, and then you can decide what you want to do. He's right, we got the recreation money, that's for recreation use, but you might have other priorities, whatever you guys want to do.
So, yeah, it's important that we stay on top of the maintenance of that, because as I was saying to the contractor, in today's world, we, we had gotten that from NIPA back in the seventies sometime. And in today's world, if we had to replace that, probably about two million, you think, it would be, we couldn't do it. We just couldn't do it.
Just to replace the roof was five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so.
That's why we did, got the grant, that's why we did the repair, to make it last another, you know, ten, fifteen years. So, and painting it is part of that, is part of the maintenance, so. We want it to last as long as we can.
Absolutely. That's a big, a great thing for the village, that pavilion. The journal newspapers, I'm just thinking, I know Sean, you mentioned that, and I know people do complain about that, but if there's some way, because some people like them, for the coupons, but if there's some way.
There were, there were no coupons in that.
Oh, no? Oh, that's why they don't like, okay.
It's called the Journal News Express. It didn't have any coupons in it. It was more of a.
It's a watered-down version of the Journal News to try and get you to, you know, subscription, subscription.
But ask them if they're, they could leave, maybe we'll have a little box out back, so if somebody really, 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 really looks forward to, because I know there are some people that like it. You know, they get the, they get the Shoprite flyer or whatever ahead of time. So, like, we don't need a hundred of them, but if there's, you know, if they would be willing to do that, that we could leave it somewhere outside here, and they can swing by and pick it up. Uh, the other thing is, um, I don't know, George, if you're involved in this, but our furnace here at Village Hall, we still need to, Marcus, you're on.
We have, in fact, we were just talking about it today. We have two engineers. We're trying to streamline a proposal to get you guys, a proposal from both engineers to determine. You gotta get an engineer first in order to have Con Ed's and work on it. We all work with Con Ed's and try to get a tap in here first, since they're working in front of Village Hall. And hopefully, we get to two engineers. We give you one recommendation, we'll give you both, you decide which way you want to go, and then we can start moving on, move forward on that.
So, we potentially have an option to go to gas?
Correct.
For now. Okay, good. Well, especially with the new line out there. Perfect. All right, that's all I have for this evening. Do we have any comments from the floor?
One chat, uh, Ms. Stewart, if you can read the chat, when Anthony Raftery spoke, I would, I would be very excited to have a beautiful new development to add to our community. That's the only thing that came in, that's a chat.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No hands are raised so far.
Okay. No one in the audience? All right. I'm going to make a motion then, the board, the board members have nothing else to say, to go into an executive session to discuss contractual negotiations and also personnel. I'd like to discuss. So, on a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.